And no one left the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll get going at seven o'clock with this meeting.
Sounds good.
I like my chances too, but she said the same thing.
Come on now.
It's not about the numbers. Let's just respect the process. Plus, I'm like, it's twice as much work for your web guy to do it.
To do it, put it on, take it off.
Twice? Come on now.
If I'm waiting till then.
Get one picked up on the wall and walk out of there.
It's only happening once.
You want me to take that for you, Andre?
Sure.
What's that?
Get those out of here.
I'm going to move them over here by Jim so he can munch on them.
Chris threw them back.
Chris threw them back.
Too much sugar, give me nightmares tonight.
They hold that out of here.
We were echoing here, did you?
No, I didn't. I don't do technology.
His laptop probably has its microphone on.
Microphone on, or?
Because it's going.
Yeah, going, coming.
It's going to the owl thing twice.
Oh, okay.
My guess would be it's usually a laptop that's not muted.
Yeah, how are you?
Living the dream. I don't think so.
Where we're headed, it doesn't work for me. Hit the road, no bad feelings.
That's our life.
I gotta make a change. I gotta make a change.
Yep.
Not aligned with where you're going.
Yeah.
They're just annoying because they're buzzing around everywhere. They try to get you drinks, you gotta watch them for that.
I think we got at least four. I kept, I looked at my calendar day, I'm like, why do I need to be off early on Thursday? Welcome. And I'm like, oh, that's why. But I remember because tomorrow we're going down to...
Yeah, you said they were echoing in the chambers. Do you mind saying something and then I'm going to go, but wait until I kind of get into chambers, so we can test it for hose.
All you have to do is read the back of it.
We even had football at the first pitch yesterday.
Okay, can you hear me, Amy?
It's pretty bad.
Is it still echoing?
And I took my phone, USB-C to HDMI, had my dish anywhere app running on my phone, off some wifi.
I've got the TVs turned on.
So we were watching Red Zone while we're playing shoes.
That's a set of microphones that shouldn't be working.
Can you say something again, Sheila?
Can you hear me now?
Still the same.
That one, because that TV was all the way up.
I did this one, not that one.
Okay, try again, Sheila.
Okay, testing, testing.
Oh, that's better.
Take it all the way to zero.
They should be, but you're not on Zeus, are you?
No.
Okay, Sheila?
Sheila, one more time.
Testing, one, two, three.
Now we got it. Perfect.
Thank you, Sheila. From the TVs and the speakers. We don't need all of it. How do those get up? Somebody in here watching TV during the day?
Staff meeting slash game show hour.
Say it like it's a bad thing.
Okay. Got everyone back?
We do.
Okay. Chris is back?
No.
I wasn't sure if he was just missing the beginning.
Yeah, no, he's not here tonight.
All right. The next item on the agenda then is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda shall activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, sir, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed in?
We do. We have Mike, first, we have Mike Reinhardt.
Okay.
Mark, sorry.
Yeah.
It happens all the time. No, I read Mike Stike afterwards, and my brain doesn't work that way.
This was hard.
Apologies.
All right, Mark, would you like to come up? Name and address, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. My name is Mark Reinhardt. I live at 317 South Golden Drive. I've lived in Silt since 2006, so nineteen years. And for a number of years, I was with planning and zoning, and Chris was here with us too, planning and zoning. But I'd just like to speak on a couple of items. First was my near-death experience of trying to get on I-70 this morning. I know that there was, I had read that we had put in to have the extension of the entrance ramp at some point, and I was curious as to where that is. I'm also concerned about the bridge over the interstate when it comes to pedestrian safety. So, and I understand too, this is just comment, I don't expect any answers back, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that those are two, two items in town that certainly need to be addressed. And then finally, the tiny homes subdivision that we have, which is a great subdivision that we approved, the PUD, while I was chairman of the planning and zoning. I've had a friend lived over there for four or five years now, and there were a number of things that I thought we had asked Ray to do that have yet to be done. And first would be the entrance to the subdivision, which is basically a dirt driveway off of the Fuel Plaza, which doesn't speak too well of, you know, what was anticipated and approved to be planned, which was a regular entrance off of the frontage road. So that, I don't know what kind of things happened that prevented those things from being done. There are no mailboxes over there. People have to get post office boxes. I think that's kind of a big disservice. The roads are not paved, they're gravel. It's very dirty if you live there, dusty, so we'll see when it comes up. Also, there's the land lease that people who own homes over there, those fees seem to be escalating every year, and I don't know if there's any limit on those, but soon it's conceivable that those land leases will equal mortgage payments, making that whole concept a little less attractive. And lastly, I thought Ray was going to have storage facilities built to buffer between the auto parts out on the frontage road and the subdivision, and would also act as a sound barrier for the interstate noise, which is pretty excessive for those that live, especially on the north side of the subdivision. So I'm just curious as to what happened to all those stipulations in the PUD and the fact that they've kind of gone by the wayside. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Time to perfect.
All right, next.
And now we have Mike Stike.
Mike Stikes.
I won't call him Mark Stike. I won't get, I won't be, I won't be completely dyslexic.
All right.
So, I have a problem with the traffic around here.
Name and address.
Oh, my name is Mike Stike, 261 Valley Drive in Silt, Colorado. Wonderful Silt. Now, I have a major problem with traffic. The speeders, they're outrageous. The stop sign runners, they're outrageous. You can stand out here in the corner, and you'll watch them roll through that stop sign all day long. Where are the cops? I have nothing against Chief Kite and his officers. I don't see them. I live on Grand Avenue. I don't see any cops going by. People are going by my house at fifty, sixty, seventy mile an hour at times. Then they get out on the highway, and they're doing ninety, a hundred, a hundred twenty. And you know it. You all drive it. It's insane. I'm going to ask you all to write a letter to the, our wonderful governor and all the other local jurisdictions, tell them to crack down on this, and ask for some state troopers out here. In seventeen months, I seen seven state troopers on I-70. Seven in seventeen months. And they're just sitting there watching people go zooming on by. It's insane. People get killed out there. Last spring, I seen a guy blow by a loading school bus on Grand Avenue, right at the park. He had to be doing sixty mile an hour. He got to the Sixteenth Street stop sign, he barely slowed down to make that corner. It's insane. So I'm going to ask you guys to go through the process, the administrator, and then Chief Kite and his officers. And I have nothing wrong with those guys. They're all wonderful people. I've met quite a few of them. And crack down. I hear people tell me, well, I set my odometer, or my speedometer, cruise control for five or ten over. You're lawbreakers. You're lawbreakers. A friend of mine told me he got pulled over doing thirty-six and a thirty-five. I said, did he get a ticket? He said, no. I said, you shut up, you're a lawbreaker. Is that wrong? Am I wrong? How many crimes are we going to do before somebody does something about this? If I went and robbed a store for a little bit of money, I'm still a robber, right? Right? So if you're a speeder, you're a speeder. Get a ticket. The stop sign running is insane. I almost lost my life. The guy ran through a stop sign and went right and hit me on my motorcycle. Almost killed me when I was eighteen. It bothers me. It really, really bothers me. Any of you speed? Be honest. Look in the mirror tonight, and then ask yourself, and look at your speedometer when you're driving. Speed limit in town is twenty-five. Eagles View and Mesa View is fifteen. I admit, that's hard to do, especially going uphill. It's really hard. Come down, it's easier because you can ride the brakes, and it's much easier. I've been told by past administration that these cars are so easy to go fast. Well, that's true, but almost everyone has cruise control. Let's crack down on these, these lawbreakers. And they are lawbreakers. Does anyone disagree? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other?
That is it.
That is it? Okay. All right. I do want to thank the public for having some public comments tonight. I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda. This contains the minutes of the August 25th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting, the appointment of an interim police administrative operations manager, resolution number thirty-three, 2025, a resolution of the Board of Trustees awarding the bid for the Eighth Street Improvement Project to Martinez West in the amount of $692,694, and resolution number thirty-four, 2025, a resolution supporting the grant application for Department of Local Affairs Local Planning Capacity Grant in the amount of $133,250 for a total project cost of $267,500 in order to hire a limited full-time employee to update the town's comprehensive plan and rewrite titles sixteen and seventeen of the Silt Municipal Code. Big consent agenda. Would anyone like to discuss any of those separately or make a motion?
I have a question, number three.
Okay.
So if we approve the consent agenda tonight, what's the timeframe when they could start? And do you anticipate it being finished by winter?
I, we have a meeting with the contractor tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We're going to see what his schedule is. And the engineer will be there with us, and we'll determine if the project is doable this year, and what is going to happen if, say, they don't get pavement done. Will they maintain the roads through the winter, or it will be up to the town? So those will be decisions we'll make tomorrow with the contractor.
Okay.
And the town engineer.
All right. Thank you, Director Lindin.
Because when, yeah, when does asphalt stop?
Depending on the weather, like frontier lines, they'll go into November, depending on the weather. But once you get that temperature, I think it's, if you get below fifty-five degrees in the daytime, it gets too cold for the asphalt. The asphalt cools too fast.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We'll see what they have to say, if they get awarded this contract. So, all right. Any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by trustee Engelhardt to approve the consent agenda as presented. Seconded by trustee Clausen. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
No, sir.
None here? None either? Then we got a water plant construction update with Dan. Come on up.
Thank you. Dan Galvin with Garni Construction for this month's water treatment plant project update. They're showing the pictures up on the screen. I know not everybody was here when we presented last month, but kind of less to look at as we're just doing pipe work and stuff inside the building with those picture updates. Health and safety items, glad to report that we continue with no safety incidents to date on the project site. As always, like to shout the plant staff and visitors, everyone continues to wear proper PPE around the site as it still is a live construction site. With that said, we mostly just have small vehicle traffic and like eighteen-foot flatbed deliveries, a lot, lot less of the tractor trailers coming through the site, if at all. And then we continue with our weather awareness, not so much the heat, although we remind everybody to drink the water on a regular basis, and we keep an eye out for weather, especially lightning in the area once we pull the guys in. Regarding the construction progress, again, interior process piping and equipment continues. Again, as we say in the industry, the small bore piping, a lot of the, just connecting the equipment panels and pumps in the area. As well, electrician is still on site, running exposed electrical conduit, working on some lighting in various areas of the building, and installing instruments and wiring those up as well. Chemical equipment and piping is wrapping up. Last week, we started testing and flushing that small bore piping to make progress to tie into the large diameter piping. And similar to that, commissioning equipment where, where and when available. We had some vendors on site today as well, working on some of the flow control devices. We continue with process commissioning meetings. That involves plant staff, construction staff, the engineers, and some of our other electrical partners. So that has made good progress with those, making sure all the information's getting shared, so that when these guys get on site, they're efficient with their time. And then the next progress, again, with all the equipment stuff going in, is moving into the existing building. So that's not something we haven't touched a lot yet. I know in the past, we've asked about interruptions to the waters, existing water service. So now, as we move into the existing building, there'll be some temporary rerouting, which will be some short four or five-hour shutdowns inside the plant. This way, we'll open up floor space so that we can get some of the new equipment that is in that space installed. Regarding schedule, again, I don't know everybody was here at the last presentation. Both the schedule update, last time, we talked about a small delay. There were some of the process equipment that was going through some design revisions and some workup with getting it procured on site. And so with that, for the longest time, we were tracking this month, September, to do initial startup of the plant before we got into the existing plant. But with this equipment, now we're going to, tracking into mid-December, mid-late December for our performance testing. And with that, like I mentioned previous, we've flip-flopped some of our activities so that not all the work will come to a halt on the site. Construction crews will continue to process in the new plant and such. Like I said, so we're working towards getting everything started up, tested, installed, so that when this last piece of equipment shows up, it can drop right into place, and we can immediately start our wrap-up process and get the plant, the new plant online. Contingency log, so some updates been presented to the plant staff and others involved, Tony Zankanel's been looking at these things, and as well, the pipeline out on the frontage road came out of that. So there's been a reduction in that to, it's just over a million dollars now. And again, so plant staff and Tony are looking at the proper items to consume the rest of that budget there. A few items are, we're looking at in pricing to make some adjustments in the new plant for some of the items that, some recording devices and such that helped the plant staff report to state. So more to come on that in the near future. And then billing to date, twenty-point-five million out of the twenty-four, approximately eighty-four percent billed. Remaining is some electrical with, as they wrap up. All of our equipment's on site, less this last piece, the, and most of that, a few more billings coming in as those vendors come on site and start that up, and then just a little bit of overhead as well for Garni. Now with that, glad to open it up to questions.
I'm excited. We're getting close.
Getting close, yeah.
And Vale Pass Rest Stop is still not open.
No chance.
We're still, we still have a chance.
Push back to December, though, kid. Pick up on that.
Yeah, it might.
How will those service interruptions be communicated to affected residents and businesses?
There shouldn't be any interruptions to the residents. We'll make sure that we have full tanks, so when they do shut it down, those residents will be in water.
Cut over. Perfect.
Yeah, with a few of the shutdowns we've done previous, plant staff has a little bit of historical data. So even, even though we're shutting stuff down, I agree, there shouldn't be any interruptions in...
Do we want to maybe, though, just communicate it to let people know that, you know, maybe it may not be the best day to do all your laundry and everything and whatnot, just to?
We can put a notice out on...
Just as a precautionary thing to?
Yeah, we can put a notice out on TextMyGov and...
That'd probably, I mean, something like that, just for...
Don't water your fifty-acre parcel that, that day.
As long as irrigation water, fine.
Talk to you.
Yeah, because I have fifty-eight acres. You must talk to one of you.
Yeah, I'd rather have the communication go out, even if they're not directly going to be affected.
Because that way, if case something were to not go smoothly, and all of a sudden we had an issue, we at least, we're out in front of it.
Yeah, if, if something does not go smoothly, how many days can we go on just storage?
On historic, there were, if our tanks are completely full, we should be able to run for four days.
Okay.
You know, that's never been tested, so.
Let's not find out either.
Can we not test that?
Okay. Okay. And not that it, it doesn't matter for any purpose other than I'm curious. Is the sprinkler system a glycol system, or is it dry system on the fire sprinkler?
Hmm, no, it is a wet system, but it is not, because of conditions, I would say because of the conditioned space, it's not glycol.
Not glycol, okay.
Yeah, it's only in our chemical area.
Okay.
Right, and that is, that's a good question. That's up and functioning, and orange, check that out.
Check that, okay.
Yeah.
And then I was, I was actually surprised at how large the grains of sand are in that filtration. I thought they were going to be much finer. I was thinking like beach sand in there.
Well, then it's a trick on the eyes. So that is the support media, which, yes, is like three-quarter by five-eights and three-quarter maybe by inch. The vendor wanted to see the little bit of piping go in before that gets buried, because I guess in the lessons learned in the past, if there's an issue there, it's a big deal, because you got to pull that out. But yes, then beach sand, the green sand, and anthracite is the next.
Next on top there. All right.
So you are correct. Yeah, there's still some very, very fine sand to go in there.
To go in there, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it's not looking good. Yeah, I'm excited to kick this thing off, so. And I'm sure they can figure out a way to spend the extra contingency money at some point in time.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Dan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Then we're going to jump back on the agenda and see if there's any agenda changes, because I missed that.
No, we don't have any agenda changes.
Any agenda changes by the board?
No, sir.
All right. So that mistake didn't ruin anyone's night. Next up, we have resolution number thirty-one, series 2025, a resolution of the Board of Trustees concerning findings of fact for the annexation of property owned by Spencer Charles Holdings LLC and known as the Go Rentals Annexation into municipal boundaries of the town of Silt, Colorado. I'll turn it over to Director Santana.
All right. On July 28th, the application for substantial compliance came in front of the Board of Trustees. It was approved, and that led to a thirty-day public notice requirement per state statute that gave town staff and referral agencies thirty days to research the requirements for findings of facts. The staff report is initially the same with some updates on the timing and what was approved previously. There is a motion in the staff report, but in the resolution, starting on page thirty-five, there are twelve determinations that the findings of fact needed to comply with, of which all twelve determinations were complied with. So staff recommends that there is an approval for the findings of fact, which would then lead to the next step in the process, which is... I just had my timing pulled up here. It would end up being a first and second reading of the ordinance of the annexation, and then the first and second reading of the zoning and a resolution of annexation agreement. So those, all of those agenda items would be on the next agenda in October. I think it's, we would do, the first reading would be September 22nd for the ordinances, and then the second reading for the ordinances and the resolution, and the single reading for the resolution would be Tuesday, October 14th, because we are closed for a holiday Monday, October 13th. So the board meeting will be on a Tuesday. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have, but we are still continuing to chug along with the annexation process. And I believe, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that the owner or representative for Go Rentals is on the Zoom call as well, and I'd welcome them to say anything that they had to say otherwise. This is just the next step in the process.
All right. Do we have any questions for town staff before we let the applicant speak, if they would like to?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. If we know who the applicant is, can we unmute them and see if they have anything like, they would like to add?
I do not know the name of the applicant, Nicole.
It would be Brad Jordan or...
Justin.
Justin Sanford.
Sanford. I saw Brad Jordan try to get in.
They're both in there. I'll unmute both of them.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm unmuted. This is Brad Jordan, the applicant of, representative for Spencer Charles Holdings and Justin Sanford. I don't really have anything to add. Nicole has been working on this diligently for several months now, and I think we're pushing through the process, and we're very happy with the progress we're making.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the applicant?
Not here.
Not at this point, no.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so if everyone's all right, I'll do the public hearing.
Sure.
All right. The time is 7:25 PM, and I will open up the public hearing for resolution number thirty-one, series 2025. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Would anybody in the chambers like to speak to this agenda item? Okay. All right. Then the time is still 7:25 PM, and I'll close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move to approve... I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, I move to approve resolution thirty one, series twenty twenty five. For the findings of fact annexation for the property known as parcel B, dupless subdivision exemption. County of Garfield, State of Colorado, with the conditions noted above.
I'll second.
Alright, motion by trustee Clausen to approve. Uh resolution number thirty one, series twenty twenty five, for the finding of fact annexation for the property known as parcel B. Uh dupless subdivision exemption, Garfield County, State of Colorado, with the conditions noted above. Uh and that was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hanahan. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that will then move us on to. Uh resolution number twenty eight, series twenty twenty five. Uh resolution of the town of Silt, Colorado approving a minor subdivision plat for the property known as the reclaimed water plant subdivision exemption. Uh parcels A and parcel B for the creation of an easement on parcel A. And the re-subdivision of parcel B in the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And I will turn this one over to Director Santana.
Alright, the town is under contract to sell the Holiday Inn parcel to Mr. Gotem. Um nor commonly known as fifteen thirty five River Frontage Road. The town currently owns fifteen fifty five River Frontage Road, which is the. Asteror property that the town exercised the right to purchase back. And so with the town currently owning both parcels, before either is sold, we would like to re. We'd like to do a minor subdivision, allowing the town to maintain ownership of the river trail. And we would like to solidify um easements on both parcels. An adjacent property that's getting ready to develop. Brought to light that the access control plan that CDOT and the town of Silt adopted. Back in two thousand nine requires a through road between the two parcels, so we'd like to solidify that. Um access easement fifteen feet on each side of um the adjacent property line with both parcels. As well as trail easements and the Holiday Inn sign is currently encroaching on the. Excuse me, on the fifteen fifty five River Frontage Road property. That we'd also like to carve out an easement for, so that that Holiday Inn sign does not need to move. There is. A subdivision plat map that is attached in the staff report and it will also be attached at the end. That shows all of the easements and what's gonna be recorded along with. A resolution and within the staff report, at the end of the staff report, there is. A recommended motion, staff does recommend approval of the subdivision and easement. Um and solidifying the easements and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, um the map is there for you to review.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Hang on a minute, we'll get to public comment in just a second, Harvey.
Nicole, this the sign, was it originally put in the wrong location and now we're expanding the easement? To to allow it to be in what in theory is a right location?
My assumption, um this was before my time, but my assumption is that. There's a thirty foot accessing utility easement already existing on the west side of both parcels. And my assumption is that the sign should have been within that easement. I don't know how the sign ended up outside of that easement, I just know that it's existing outside of that easement.
That's where it is now.
That's where it is.
And you're in the chair.
Yes, so it's cleanup mode.
You don't think we should just make a move the sign a couple inches over?
That's a huge sign.
It would be, it would be like six feet over.
It would be.
Yeah.
Seems like.
We joke about it, but there is a precedent to this, right? If we if we say you built it wrong back in the day, but now we're gonna let you. I just think we need to be cautious about that. I'm not saying that this isn't a justified case for for making such an exception. I just think we need to be pragmatic about it, because it is gonna be precedent setting. It was originally done two thousand nine or thereabouts.
Yeah, the I'm not sure when the sign was installed, I can get that information. I mean, the plat, the original plat was recorded in two thousand six.
Well, it's not in our road easement and it's not a nuisance, so. I guess, I I hear what you're saying though, you know what I mean about the precedent, setting a precedent, but. Not letting him get put in the middle of the road or anything.
Most of the complaints that I hear from residents about signs are that they're too big or too bright. But location is certainly a factor in both of those. If it's right next to you, it's a little bit bigger and a little bit brighter.
And, oh sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I was just saying, I don't have a problem with it in this case, I was just asking for context to better understand when it happened.
Yeah, and and my assumption would be that maybe the town at that point in time was under the impression they were gonna own both parcels. And just land lease out for long term, um but with it being an access, a sign access easement. Whatever develops on parcel A could also use that same pole to add an additional sign. So I think we would have to leave it open to both parcels to be able to utilize.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'd rather seem to share a pole than put another.
Exactly.
That was my thinking.
Yeah.
And the key thing is preserving that trail access, that's for me, the key thing is is getting that clarified right now. So that it aligns with all the stuff we have planned for the waterfront in terms of trails and use by our citizens. Yeah, I'm happy to keep the sign where it is to get the trails guaranteed.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay, alright, any other discussion by the board before you open up the public hearing?
I don't have anything.
Alright, uh the time is seven thirty three PM and I'll open up the public hearing for resolution number twenty eight, series twenty twenty five. Uh persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or she'll any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, would you like to come up up to the table and state your name and address for the public comment, please?
Mike Stike, two six one Valley Drive, Silt, Colorado. Is that parcel the one directly north of the Holiday Inn?
Yes.
Has it been disclosed that they have huge concrete slabs buried under the dirt there?
Yes.
It has been?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I've been concerned about that for many years.
Uh yeah, they'll have to do a the the site rehabilitation and grading and all kinds of stuff there, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, okay, alright. Uh time is seven thirty four PM and I'll close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty eight, series twenty twenty five. For the minor subdivision plat for property known as the reclaimed water plant subdivision exemption parcel A and parcel B. For the creation of easements on parcel A and the re-subdivision of parcel B, town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado.
I have a second.
Alright, motion by trustee Clausen. Uh to approve resolution number twenty eight, series twenty twenty five, for the minor subdivision plat for property known as the reclaimed water plant subdivision exemption. Parcel A and parcel B, for the creation of easement on parcel A and the re-subdivision of parcel B. Uh town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hanahan. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And, thank you, Nicole?
Yes, and I meant in the town of Silt. I know, I I did say for the town of Silt, so that was my.
It can be both.
My bad.
It can be both. Uh next up is resolution number thirty five, series twenty twenty five. Uh resolution approving the termination of a subdivision improvement agreement for Silt Building LLC. Acknowledgement of termination of common interest community uh for the Silt commercial condominiums. And the termination of condominium units created by the condominium plat of the Silt Building LLC. Uh dated June twelfth, two thousand three, and improvements installed agreements, uh agreement. For improvements to be made at four oh one Main Street. This one is just an action item, not a public hearing, and I will turn it over to Attorney Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the memorandum provided uh does note at the bottom that we're seeking a continuance on this. Uh until the next meeting, but I did want the board to get some background information as this will be coming back for your. Uh consideration. So as I'm sure everybody in town is aware, there's a very large building. In the four hundred block of Main Street, um it houses various businesses. Uh the there's this building to the front towards the the sidewalk that's kind of sub terrain. Uh that, as I understand it, used to serve as the base for the ambulance operation in Silt. And this building back in two thousand three was, well, the two buildings was converted into a a condominium with ten units. And the owners at the time contemplated that they would sell off those units and businesses would have the ability to kind of. Own the space in which they operated and and communally. Uh undertake to upkeep the the landscaping and the parking and and the various common elements. Um when the town approved the condominium map back in uh two thousand three, the town simultaneously approved. Uh a subdivision improvements agreement. Uh that agreement, which largely uh involved improvements on the site. Uh not really offsite improvements, but onsite improvements. Uh was designed to be phased, uh and the the phasing was triggered by when units were sold by the the prior developer. Um there was no security taken uh to ensure the public improvements were. Uh were actually constructed. Uh and the property remained under singular ownership for about a decade after that. In twenty fourteen, the town was given notice that uh some units had transferred. Uh into the name of Nathaniel Colby and Joe Colby, they were the, I think, the principals of the. Uh LLC that held the title to the property at the time, but but that triggered in the town's view. Um that some of these improvements at least had had come to pass. The uh at the time, I I believe this ended up on an agenda. Uh it's eleven years ago now, so I don't completely remember. Uh but the administration at the time uh deemed that the appropriate action, which is allowed under the subdivision improvements agreement. Was to uh record a notice of violation. Uh that notice of violation has been of record since two thousand fourteen. And uh the town was contacted a couple weeks ago about providing a utility letter. Uh as part of a transfer of ownership of the property uh to a new owner. And at that time, the town responded to the title company that there was a active notice of violation. And the uh that thus began some communications back and forth between the attorneys for both the selling entity and the buyer. Uh of the property. Um what seems clear at this point is that uh the. The original condominiumization of uh the buildings i- is not really a viable use of the land. Uh and in fact, the current owner, two years ago, recorded. A notice of condominium termination. Uh in the public records, which had the effect of terminating the common interest community. That was intended to to own and manage things that were used in common like. Walls, roofs, parking areas, landscape areas. Uh the selling entity's attorney explained to me that that that, you know, that was really done. Because it was just deemed that the condominium format was not viable. Um while the town did not like grant a uh. Dissolution of the condominium units that were created by the condominium map. Um the effect of this uh condominium termination agreement makes it very hard to argue that there are condominium units left to convey. And so where we're at today is we we have some approvals that really are no longer viable, they're no longer. Uh what the owners or the market wants. Uh there's to be a sale, uh it would be good to clean some stuff up in light of the. Condominium termination agreement. Uh I would like to see some kind of acknowledgement that the units that were created on the condominium map are in fact. Uh no longer there, that the town would execute something, it would be recorded that would note that. Uh the condominium units are are no longer a thing, they cannot be separately conveyed. Um and I think at this point, it makes sense to terminate the subdivision improvements agreement. Because again, the without the condominium units, you really don't have a subdivision. Um I would think that at some point, it, you know, the new buyer is gonna have a new idea for what to do with this property. And that will trigger either through a subdivision process or potentially a site plan approval process. An opportunity for the developer in the town to work on. Um kind of what the next generation vision is for for this block in town. So uh we're still working with, I'm still working with the uh the buyer and the seller's attorney. I have requested that as part of uh doing um undertaking these actions. That they would agree to make some primarily beautification improvements to the property. Uh the ideas that have been floated would be especially for the building that housed the ambulance, that that would be painted. That there would be a new roof put on it and that some additional more. Non-wild looking landscaping would be would be installed and maintained on the property. Uh and so I hope to be bringing back to you at the September twenty two board meeting, uh a proposed agreement. Uh to have those improvements made as well as a document acknowledging the termination of the condominium units. And a resolution terminating the subdivision improvements agreement. So wanted you to have the background on this, certainly happy to take any comments you may have on this at this time. Um but final action, we think will take place in two weeks.
So they are they trying to sell it now, um the property?
The there is a contract to sell the entirety, so again, not individual condo units. But the the entirety of the the four hundred block at that location.
So there's no, there's no condo owners who will be harmed by this, who purchased some. A part of the building and and we're ruining that.
That's a great, yeah, great question, so while at one point in time. Uh ownership of various condominium units had been divvied up between two members of the Colby family. In twenty twenty three, deeds were executed back to, well, into a new entity called JWK. Properties or I forget the exact name, but the ownership of all ten units is in common at this point. And that's why they were able to uh execute and record the condominium termination agreement is because everything was owned by by one entity.
Okay, just kind of confirming that, I guess.
No, I just, this has been a headache for the town ever since they did this, so I'm I'm all in favor of going this direction.
Alright, any other comments? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to continue this till the September twenty second meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to continue resolution number thirty five, series twenty twenty five, to the September. Second, twenty second meeting.
Second?
Uh motion by trustee Brittonal to continue uh resolution number thirty five, series twenty twenty five, uh to the September twenty second meeting. Seconded by trustee Poston, alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh next up is the. Next up is the electronic participation policy. Pass it over to manager man.
You had asked this to be put on the agenda. Back in COVID times, you adopted an electronic policy for emergency situations. It was amended or you adopted a new resolution in two thousand and twenty-one that made those rules permanent. There weren't really many rules included in your policy. And I think part of the discussion that you wanted to have was, is this policy still working? Do you want to make some tweaks to it? And so have it on the agenda for just discussion this evening, see if you want to tweak it at all.
And just to recap, did it include having meeting to be on Zoom and for public and?
It, it, it is for all the board and committees, standing committees of the organization. And it allows you to be electronic via Zoom or whatever platform that we're using. It says that the meetings will be conducted at Town Hall and that anybody who's participating on a electronic platform needs to be able to be clearly understood and hear properly so they're not a disruption to the meeting.
And I know we have a preference to coming in person, but if there is a situation where we would be in Zoom, not that we have used that a whole lot, but I feel like the policy still works. What do you think?
No, I, I feel meetings should be, you know, in, in these chambers. And I guess if, if, you know, somebody's ill and they do want to participate, that would be an option. You know, and just so they're not here, but I'm, I'm all in favor of there, all the meetings being, you know, held in person.
What was the policy prior to two thousand and twenty-one?
Same. It just was an emergency rule.
And before COVID, it was no?
There were no reasons, yeah.
There was no electronic meetings before COVID. During COVID, the town adopted an emergency, you know, a, a, a resolution for electronic participation in the event of emergency. In two thousand and twenty-one, you took the emergency part back out or removed it. So it was just a permanent, you could attend electronically.
I just don't like the fact that people would take advantage of it. Because back when I was on P and Z, I'd be the only one in this room. Everybody else would be on, on Zoom. And it's like, wait, that's, that's not right.
So I, I think meetings should be conducted in this room. I think the board should be in this room. I think applicants should be in this room. I think staff should be in this room. Almost every meeting, you have someone that's joining via Zoom. There's communication issues, they're cutting in, they're cutting out. You know, I, there was, there was a, I didn't want to say there was a reason why we went to Zoom meetings. We were forced to do Zoom meetings. You know, I think participation is here. I know if I can't attend a meeting, I, I'm not going to join by Zoom because I'm not doing a service. So.
I feel, I feel like that's a little rigid. I mean, I think, respectfully, I mean, I think that people can still listen and participate. And I, I think that, you know, in my line of work, there were a lot of instances where people were deprived. You know, maybe they're disabled and they can't make it here or something. And so the electronic particip, you know, there's a lot of things that COVID did where now people have more meaningful access when they didn't before. But I, I think guidelines are important and people not taking advantage of it are important. You know, so I think we, we should have some good li, guidelines around it. But I think that the, the ability to be able to participate in that way can be, yeah, can be pretty life-altering for some people. And so I, I think, I think we need it and it's just a reality, unfor, I mean, sort of unfortunately, but sometimes it's pretty great.
Set up the guidelines, set up the expectations. And we know that we prefer to have participation in person. And a lot of times when talking to people who present to us, that can be said through administration to the people that we are contracting with. But yeah, I completely agree. I feel like the viability of the options still needs to be present. However, expectations and guidelines need to be set forth.
How would folks feel about the Board of Trustees and the Planning and Zoning Commissioners having to be present, but allowing applicants and other viewers to join electronically and participate electronically?
I think, I think in-person should be preferred for everybody. You know, I, I prefer the.
I just think if you tell, you have an applicant, so right now we have many projects going on in town. I think as a board, you get ten times more out of it with that applicant sitting at that table than you do having six members of their team on Zoom.
And less of the hiccups and things like that.
And trying to, and if you tell them, we prefer you to come in, well.
Unless it's a situation like tonight where, you know, we really weren't reviewing a whole lot. You know, with the findings of whatever that is.
I mean, if I'm, if what, if someone's contagious, stay home. You know what I mean? If you can listen to the meeting and not get us all sick, then that's an example to me. And that's like a public safety issue.
We have quorum rules to account for that. If I were sick, I would let Jim know that I can't make it. He would say, we still have a quorum, no worries.
But if you could make it.
That's, but that's why I think it's different for us as elected officials and for Planning and Zoning Commissioners as appointed officials versus folks from the public or applicants, you know, Attorney Sawyer is connected electronically right now. I don't feel that his being connected electronically is a distraction or a deterrent from him participating in the discussion. He's also not casting any votes on anything, and that, to me, is the difference. I want to be able to have a real-life discussion with the, with the other decision-makers in the room. And I know on the planning and zoning side, they have enough participation now, and we've changed the rules regarding who can vote and who can't. But I think those issues of a quorum have gone away. So we, we can, we can require that elected and appointed officials be in the room, but still let other people participate. To the point of applicants, if they want to put their best foot forward, get in the room. If they want to provide a lesser presentation or risk it not going through, then by all means, connect electronically.
Yeah, but if it's something like a liquor license renewal, yeah, it would be nice to have them here, that chose, they, they kind of.
Yeah, we could certainly encourage it. I think, again, the distinction to me, the line is if you're an elected or appointed official and you're going to be voting on something, you should be in the room. And if not, there, there are enough participants that we can establish a quorum. If you're contagious, if you're sick, or your kids are sick, or your work ran late, we all have full lives, I get it. But we also chose and got elected to be here. Or chose to try and get appointed to be a, a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Yeah, and to that point, I haven't seen an incidence of higher participation in electronic means within this board. Perhaps maybe if I can count, once or twice. So I think we are talking about a problem that's really not happening now. I think if we think within like the future, if we are concerned about new elected officials potentially that could come in. But when we give those guidelines and the expectation on someone on a body of board of trustee, if they are set expectations and they're not meeting those expectations, then that's a different issue. But we are addressing a policy that we are not seeing a problem happening now. But if it is to address future issue for the board itself, we could address on, you know, new hire potentially. As far as the public, I strong, I strongly feel we should have both options available. And I also feel that if we are dealing with some contractors that are from out of, you know, that the town of Silk, that we have contracted in the past that have done services for us, to definitely have the town administration let them know, yes, the board would like to see you in person, make the effort. And if it is absolutely impossible, that's when, you know, we, we would, would open up that possibility. But I feel that in this day and age, we have the ability to allow people to participate. They're professionals and that can present professionally. And not too often, we have those bad hiccups with technology. The technology has been serving us really, really well here and there. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a little bit of issue. Currently, I like the availability for Zoom for vendors and for, I, I don't feel it's used for us. And I, I don't think there's, there's, there need to be like a change in policy currently. I don't see a need for it. I feel like the policy has been working properly for us now.
The only tweak I can see is possibly, what I feel is that to Mayor Brothim's point is if you're going to vote, you need to be in the room. You can still participate, you can still have conversation electronically. But to have, for the voting members to be in the room, unless there wasn't a quorum. And then to possibly have that option, or we just don't have a meeting. And now I guess we would need to think about what we want to do on that. But most times, we're going to have enough people with, you have to have four. So it's not out of seven, hopefully four can make it, otherwise we have a big problem anyway. But I feel like that if they want to participate, they can participate in conversation and whatnot. But I do think that the voting, it's just cleaner and neater and easier. And you have a more full understanding of exactly what's going on sitting here versus being electronic.
So would it be like an automatic refusal of recusal, I would say, if you're not present in the room? Like, is that like a policy change that if you're not in the room?
I wouldn't say recusing yourself, because when you recuse yourself, you're, no, I guess recusing yourself, you're stepping away completely. You're not participating in the conversation. You could, I would say that you could participate in the conversation, potentially give your input, but you just wouldn't vote because you're not in the room.
And I don't know if we could.
And that would almost be really more like a public comment type situation anyway than that.
I don't know. I guess that'd be a question for Attorney Sawyer. Can we, if we allow board members to join a meeting by Zoom, can you then prevent them from voting if they're not in the room?
Yes, I believe you can.
There you go. That's kind of, that's what I meant.
Do you want to?
Sounds like we do.
I, I, I think as, as a board, you can establish, you know, the reasonable rules by which an elected official participates in official business.
And I don't think we need to worry about. The only way to have a quorum is to have somebody on Zoom, then.
And we don't have to worry about future boards, because to be honest, if they want to do something different, they just have to pass a different rule. So what we, the rules we passed, they don't necessarily apply to a future board anyway. Being honest, this way it is.
Again, I like the idea as a policy of having the elected and appointed officials in the room. I think it's, it's important for the community to see us in the space, taking part, not via Zoom. Again, respecting that people have lives and responsibilities. We, we've not had any recent instances that I can think of where we didn't have a quorum. And I don't think Planning and Zoning has had one either in a very long time.
We have had some issues where it's been.
It's been close?
It's been close, and we have had members that are predominantly just electronic participants only.
See, that's the thing. I'd like to see predominantly here and Zoom meetings sparingly. I mean, it would be nice to see the, the town clerk and treasurer in here, but I get it. They're running the meetings, so they, they can't, you know? But if we eliminate the meetings, then they can be here again.
Good luck, good luck in the hall when you're leaving tonight. Man mugged.
I think to eliminate electronic meetings completely is, I mean, unfortunately, it's one of those things where sometimes when Pandora's Box has been opened, shutting that lid is difficult. There are arguments for different vendors or things that are on the front range to make the drive all the way out here, stay in a hotel or whatever, drive back, however that is, the cost of all that. We may get some more participation from people that we wouldn't otherwise just because of that.
I was going to say, I mean, we could be dealing with an empty seat. So if we make the rules too rigid, then, you know, we could lose participation.
I think that's the risk we run. If, if, if you choose to try and get appointed, or if you choose to try and get elected, you are acknowledging that you need to be in the room. If you can't, then don't.
But I think, I think what we have right now is great. I think the, whatever policy we have should reflect what we've got. So if someone wanted to come in and be chronically absent, then, you know, the policy would not be good, would not allow that. But, but I don't think we should change what we have because, like, if, like, if I was really passionate about something and I couldn't vote because I wasn't here, I would totally risk getting trustee Brittonall sick. Just kidding. But you know what I mean? Or, I don't know, I just, I don't know that, that's like fairness issues that come into play. I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I guess, I just, I, I agree, I absolutely agree that the remote appearance thing should be used sparingly, you know? I mean, like, with court appearances, that we have stuff where it's like, okay, this one's virtual, this isn't virtual. But then this one is like in person unless you get permission to appear virtually from the judge, right? So like, if we could have something that says, if I want to vote, I can't be there, I'm going to request, if you guys, if I could, if this is a justifiable reason to appear virtually and vote. I don't know. Maybe there's an exception process or something. I don't know.
I have seen policies from other communities that limit the number of times a year board or councilperson can participate remotely. I have seen them that in order to participate at all, their participation needs to be acknowledged or allowed by the members of the board that are sitting in the room. So, you know, in terms of kind of like the gradient of a policy so that it can't be taken advantage of, there, there are potentially some additional bookends you could put in place if that was the, the board's interest.
Yeah, like bookends, like that.
I don't see myself attending electronic meetings. However, if someone in the board needs to attend one, I think they should be allowed to. I prefer to come over, I prefer to be in person. I don't think I, I don't think of one, but I would like to grant someone that I would like to hear from, and they are not able to be here, but they're able to log into a Zoom meeting. Because I, I always enjoy listening to each one of you in all of the meetings possible. I don't want to take that away just because I want to make a strict rule, just because that's what I want. It's not how it should work.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Mayor?
I'm still, I, I definitely agree that elected officials and appointed officials need to be in the chambers. Public and applicants on Zoom, like you said, it's, if you're not willing to make the trip here, then that's like the first showing of how much you care about what you're trying to get through the town. I, you know, I, I think right now we're, we're blessed with a, a great board of people that, that do show up and come to this meeting. So it's almost like we're trying to modify a rule for future boards that can then just make, and the next, next board in here could come in and say, everything's, everything's Zoom. We don't do anything in these chambers anymore. So I, I guess, to me, you know, I want everybody in this room. I'd love to see our treasurer back in here and our town clerk back in here and all our applicants in here. Is that going to happen? Probably not. It really comes down to, and, and for the board, I think it just comes down to character, whether it means enough for you to be here or not. Like a rule is going to change, change that.
How do we feel about letting virtual attendance not be allowed to vote? If you do have to attend virtually, you can participate in the discussion, you don't have to recuse yourself, but you forfeit your vote. You're not voting for or against, you're just abstaining.
To trustee Classy's point, what's the point then of being in the meeting, just for discussions?
Well, and that's basically, it'd almost be like a member of the public and would be able to comment during public discussion, but that would be about it.
No, they could still comment during regular portions. They would simply. No, they could still comment during regular portions, they would simply.
Are you okay with that?
Have a, a voting stake.
I still feel that takes away, um, and to also, um, trustee Brittenall's point. Yes, we are not thinking about future boards. I like to think ahead and certain policies, they sit there and carry over just sometimes for lack of time. And priorities, for different priorities, so the policies that we, we established us and can potentially have an affect, affect on them. Um, I feel really strong about this. I feel the policy is working, I feel we don't have a present issue. I don't feel like we have a repetitive issue with any of the board members. Um, and for the purpose of let's not fix what's not broken. And let, let, let's not break what's working, let's for now keep the policy and maybe have another discussion a few months from now.
I agree. I mean, I think, I think if we were dealing with chronic absenteeism, that would be one thing, but I think, uh, also. All of us are capable of. Participating electronically and voting thoughtfully, even if we're not present. I think that perception and the idea of having us here consistently. I mean, if someone is out once a year, I don't think that. I mean, I would hope that town people are not gonna just get really upset by that, like that we could, we, you know, maybe you work out of town. I work out of town sometimes, so it'll, I'll have trial Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and driving back would be a huge thing. But I could still listen and participate and I would wanna vote, you know, and, um, so I don't know. I mean, I think if someone's sitting there watching TV or distracted, then that's a.
Character issue.
Right, and, and hopefully we're not dealing with that at all. This is everything, I guess, but.
And I, I guess I don't wanna go as far as taking away someone's right to vote on the board. Because there is a group of constituents that voted them on here that care about their vote. And to take that, that demographic of people and say, you voted for this person, they're not here, so now your voice doesn't matter in the.
You have a point.
In the chambers, so. So I think this is, I mean.
There could be something said for not spending a bunch of time talking about something that's not currently a problem.
Problem, yeah.
Just, just leave it as is.
And if it, and if it is a problem at P and Z, then I think that's a different, I mean, that's a different issue then.
We definitely kicked the can around.
You, you can, and I'm not suggesting you should, but you, you certainly can make this policy only applicable to the board. If, if it's an issue.
I mean, we already have rules governing if you miss X number of consecutive meetings. Or so many a year that the, the board can.
Can vote you out, yeah.
Vote you out.
Mm-hmm, yeah, those guidelines should be re- rewritten, reminded also as we have new people coming in.
So I think that would take care of the habitual offenders.
The idea of a limit on how many you can attend virtually per year, I mean. Kinda like that, cause it's also deterring that. Absenteeism.
Absenteeism?
Yeah, like I'm just gonna attend on Zoom if I, as much as I can get away with it. Kind of thing.
Again.
That we don't wanna encourage.
Yeah, we don't wanna encourage that.
Again, I think that's maybe when we're. And I was gonna say, you know, on this board doesn't seem to be a problem, P and Z is an issue, I think that's more something for this board to have those. Conversations with the applicants at that point before they get appointed. When you say you can commit to the time required, like, can you actually commit to the time required in this room, not just?
Okay.
You've got that extra time to zoom in, yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, when I applied, I was, I was like, well, I might attend virtually and it was, I, I totally got the hint that that was not. That was not gonna be okay, and I was like, oh, well then I'll be here in person, and I just, you know, and but. So, I, I mean, once I was aware of that expectation and, um, yeah, I mean, I, I changed my schedule accordingly. But yeah, it's good to, I think it's, I'm glad that the, the expectation was. You know, portrayed to me appropriately, and if we have to write it down for people to know that, then maybe that would be helpful.
We should have this discussion at a joint P and Z meeting, then we could all kinda give them the hint that.
Think maybe we put it as a topic at the next discussion then. I don't think it's where staff's time to deal with.
No, no, I was, I was.
I think, yeah, we spend enough time tonight on this anyway, so. Okay. All right, next up, manager and staff reports.
Uh, just a couple real quick items, uh, CML dinner, uh, Thursday night, it is from five until seven PM. Not five thirty to seven thirty PM, I don't know why. Probably more for a perhaps longer term discussion at some point. Um, we did receive a couple of complaints related to the rager we threw on a Thursday night. As opposed to a Friday night.
Rager rock on, dude.
For our final concert. You know, we tried it, I don't know, and I, you know, I think both Director Santano and myself would be. Happy to get feedback from the Board of Trustees on whether it's something you ever wanna do again, or you wanna keep them to Friday night. You don't have to decide tonight, but I'm just bringing it up. Those are the only things I'm gonna report on at this point.
I think that Friday probably is the preferable night, but I also see that. If we have a unique opportunity to bring an act to Silt that otherwise wouldn't have been possible. That sometimes you need to seize those opportunities and break the mold.
Yeah, I guess how was attendance?
We had.
To the others.
Yeah, the, I mean, we click, we try to catch everybody when they're coming in, and that was at nine sixty-two. But there could have been some missed, so, I mean, we were, we were just slightly under a thousand, I think.
And what's a normal Friday night concert?
We haven't quite hit a thousand yet this year, so that was the, the, yeah, that was the most attended concert. But, but we did get feedback and it was the minority of the feedback that we got that Thursday night was inconvenient. Or that there was a noise complaint on a Thursday night, but I think that had that same band been able to come on a Friday. Um, there would have been a bigger, a bigger crowd, so.
Well, that's, and that's why I said, I think that obviously the preference would be Friday, but.
Yeah.
Again, if you have an opportunity to provide an experience that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to experience because.
Yes.
Of a different date, then sometimes we break the mold and be flexible and.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's what it's gonna be with some of these larger bands is we have to catch them on their way to or from a larger venue. Which they play at on a Friday, so if we catch them on a Thursday that they're willing to come. Uh, to our small, a small little town, and we get them for six of the cost. We have to weigh out those options and say, is it worth it to try it? Which we did, and, and it was good, I mean, there was a decent attendance. It just wasn't maybe as much as we anticipated had it been a Friday.
Could we in the future, maybe, I mean, I heard a lot of people say that they didn't know about it, which. I, I mean, I felt like there was a lot of communication and a lot of publication about it. But um, we could possibly maybe have the opening band not play as long or play a little earlier to move things forward a little, so it ends a little bit earlier. That might help with some of the noise complaint things of the rager, not raging as late at least on the work night. But again, I, I was there the whole time, I'll be honest, and I had a good time and.
Yeah.
It didn't bother me going to work Friday morning, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I went up there, but then I went home.
Expect everyone else to participate to my level.
Yeah, and, and I could hear it, yes, cause I, I tried to go to bed at nine thirty, but I could hea- I mean, I enjoyed the music, I'm not complaining, but. You, you know, I, I could hear all the words perfectly from my house, I'm trying to go to bed at nine thirty and I, I, I never could fall asleep until it was over. But, you know, I, I enjoyed it.
I didn't go to sleep till well after it was over.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think it's just one of those things, if the opportunity's there, then. You know, I, I, we could have had, you know, a concert on a Friday night or Saturday night, they got noise complaints too, so.
We have.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true, yes.
So, I mean, you're not gonna make a hundred percent of people happy.
Yeah.
Okay, if it happens, it happens. That's, that's my input. Okay. Joe, you got anything you wanna throw out there?
Didn't get my report into you, but I just wanna give you the update on. The frontage road project on the twelve inch water lane line is complete, all but the seating, which will be done September fifteenth. And it did come in right at the bid price.
Nice.
And that is with the twenty-five thousand dollar bonus, so.
Okay.
That went well.
It went well, nice. Okay, anything else from staff?
No.
No? Okay, updates from the board and board comments, trustee posted.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, trustee Englehart.
Oh, I made a note about the, the parking lot at the north end of the sixteenth street. Of soccer field, because it's always very cramped on game day. And I feel like there could be twice as many parking spaces there as there are. And so, I just, sometimes I see things like that and I make a note, so hopefully I don't sound like a complainer when I mention these things, but. Um, I do write them down, and so it just, it seems like we could have more parking right there than, than what we do. And parking is always an issue, as we know, but, um, great job, everybody with. The concert and everything in town looking great, so, that's all.
Trustee Brittenall?
Um, just like to thank the town staff for all the work they've been doing. Concert was great, um, I had a very positive experience that evening in that I had the, uh, thing that everybody hates to have happen where you might. Oh no, where's my phone? Um, I dropped it in the phone party. And I went back over there, asked kids, when little kid, this girl like, my brother turned one in over the thing and went over, got my phone. I went back, I had offered a reward to the ki- the kid that found my phone. I gave the little boy the reward, he gave half of it to his sister who was standing right there, which to me was a very positive thing. Says something about the youth of Silt that maybe we're raising some of the kids at least here, right? Because they took in, uh, for him to share that, I thought was just cool.
Very nice.
That's cool, yeah.
Yeah, trustee Clausen.
Um, I guess, just cause it was mentioned earlier, do you have any answers on the tiny homes? About the entrance and.
We are still in the middle of a settlement agreement with them. But I do have a meeting set up with Ray Wednesday afternoon. To further discuss what he's gonna do to try to develop the lot to the north where they were proposing. Um, the storage units, and everything is moving forward in a positive direction. So we're really, really close to a settlement agreement and issuing permits for a couple of items. And then discussing what's gonna happen to the northern side of that parcel.
Got you, okay, thank you.
And there's some things that were not solidified in the PUD or any of the documents that were submitted to the town. That the town cannot enforce at this point in time, such as paved roads.
Yeah.
So there's some things that will not be addressed because the town doesn't have the ability to address it, but everything that the town does have the ability to do it, to address. Um, there's been positive conversation with the applicants.
Okay, nice, yeah, and I know we've had that conversation before, I just didn't know if there's anything additional at this point, so, all right, thank you. And then the, the on-ramp extension, isn't that scheduled for twenty twenty-seven?
No, I believe so, I have to give C-Dot a call because I know they did all the surveying, like last year.
Uh-huh.
So the surveying is done, so now it's just the process of doing it.
We know it's on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't wanna interrupt that guy, but I've had a de- a near-death experience right there a couple times myself, so.
I know, you, you gotta be on your toes anymore.
You have to stand on the gas pedal to be going seventy-five miles an hour by the time you get to the bottom of that ramp.
Yes.
And hope everybody in front of you is too.
Yep.
Or that the courteous drivers on I seventy get over and allow for you to get on, which.
There's not a semi right there.
Oh, and, um, I had a question about Camarillo. It looks like they had some issues out there, cause I see holes dug up all over the place.
They had some issues with their water line test, they could not get it to pass, and they ended up finding some cracked saddles. And they had to replace them, they did finally get it to pass Thursday, they did pass their water test.
Oh, okay.
So.
So they're making progress. All right, nice, and, um, I was walking past the coffee shop one day and, and one of the guys. Who, who works there, he's like, hey, can you pass it along that this tree grate, you know, is wobbly, and it, it sticks up a good couple inches.
Does it?
Yes, so, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Okay, I will pass that on and get it fixed.
That's all I had, you know, and good job, town staff, thank you all.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Where are my bubble pictures? I got no bubble pictures.
I will get them up.
It's going, what are we doing here? Come on now. I'm sure they're on social media.
Not yet.
I am not, so help an old guy out.
Oh, if they were on there, I'd have already forwarded them to.
Oh.
We will get them added maybe in the next staff reports for everybody to see that are not on social media.
I could, get them out everywhere, it was, it was fun and I think it's a good chance again for people to see us in a, in a setting and in a situation. Other than this, that we're actually people and citizens as well as elected officials.
I hope, I hope all our pictures from that and like Halloween, Eric and a, a trustee. Mayor Pro Tim hand in hand in a monkey suit. That should all go to the website for possible use on our website.
Against me in the future.
Oh, what a great community we have, and great leadership.
Vote for this guy, he's a, he's not monkeying around.
I was thinking about a great Halloween and then, you know, I thought about the monkey suit too.
Yep, no other comments for me.
Okay, um, I've got nothing either, everyone hit on everything. I was gonna say, actually, I got one thing, I don't even know if anyone's listening or not. Uh, I agree with the citizen that spoke earlier about driving in this town.
Yeah.
We all need to be friendly to our neighbors, let's stop at stop signs, let's go to the speed limit. Let's not tailgate, let's drive the right way down one-way streets, let's park on the right side of the road. Um, you know, you're gonna see the same people in this town every day, so be nice to your neighbor, do what you're supposed to do. Next item on the agenda.
I was gonna say, not to interrupt, but obviously if you're passing a school bus that has stopped or kids are getting onto it. I could not imagine if a kid came out from behind that bus and you hit that kid, that's gonna end your life. In addition to what it does to that kid and their family and everything else, it's not, no amount of time is worth that.
Am I allowed to say anything else?
No, we're past public comments, yeah, but you can come to the next one.
I forgot my list.
Oh, okay, then we'll see you next time. All right, uh, so yeah, the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I can motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by trustee Brittenall to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Clausen, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're looking at me like I forgot something, okay.
He's just happy we're done early.
Hey, twenty-five minutes early, yeah, according to me, yeah.
Thanks for coming in, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.